Okay, the clock has struck seven. So TB 79, we're ready to go. And I think Kate is recording. So I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Monday, February 22 to order for Selectmen's report. So just a brief local COVID update. You got my code read from last week. We've had 49 cases in the two-week period from February 5th to February 18th. New cases are declining significantly. And I'm happy to report that we had no hospitalizations for that same two-week period of time. And that is also a statewide trend that cases are declining. So the big news today is that the governor announced that vaccine eligibility will be expanded. He's going to stay with an age-based plan that he says will allow vaccines to roll out as quickly as possible while continuing to focus on health equity concerns and getting vaccines to people of color and high vulnerability communities as soon as possible by setting vaccine targets for those populations. These are really difficult decisions for the governor. And you know, it's not easy when you have to prioritize one individual over another. So I appreciate the thoughtful deliberation that he has put into crafting his plan. Based on the schedule that he outlined today, if supplies are available, everyone who's 16 and over, who wants to be vaccinated, will be eligible by early May, which is pretty remarkable. It will be in tranches. So beginning March 1st, I'm really happy to share that folks 55 and over, and importantly, teachers, staff, and professional childcare providers will be eligible to register for vaccine. On March 22nd, folks 45 to 55 will be eligible. On April 12th, folks 35 to 44. And then on May 3rd, anyone from 16 to 34. With the expansion of the eligibility, the Darien Clinic will become an open clinic, which means no longer will people register through the Health and Human Service Department. You will have to register through the state's vaccine management system, a link to which is in the red bar at the top of the Town of Darien homepage. The local health department will be working hand in hand with the superintendent and the school district to arrange vaccine clinics for teachers and staff and childcare providers. Statewide, over 70% of those 75 years and older have been vaccinated, and 37% of folks 65 to 74 have been vaccinated. Over 826,000 doses have been provided to date. Hospitalizations are down statewide, and there are only 150 people. I shouldn't say only, but it was much higher. 150 people are hospitalized in Fairfield County hospitals as of today. Total deaths statewide stand at 7,562 people. The governor is very hopeful that the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine will be out soon also, and is very optimistic about vaccine supply. My only other note is that the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education will turn over our budgets to the Board of Finance next Tuesday evening, March 2nd, at 7:30 PM. That meeting will be held virtually.
Just one update for you towards the end of the budget discussions. I told you that the IT department had notified me that they thought they could come in lower on the police server, but they didn't have a firm number. So I do have a firm number now of $71,310. That's a savings of almost $50,000. I'm giving that to Jen Trinaski for the Board of Finance to make that cut.
Wow, that's great. Thank you. Anything else for you, Kate?
No, that's it.
David, did you have a question?
Just with regards to the town clinic becoming an open clinic, would I be right to presume that people that have had the first dose, that have a second dose scheduled, are still, they still keep to that schedule, and that the open clinic applies to new applicants?
That's correct. If you got your first dose in a Darien clinic, you must get your second dose at the Darien clinic. Correct.
And your existing appointment still holds?
Correct. Okay, Board Liaison Reports. David, we received your blight report, but please, by all means, go ahead and provide that verbally.
Well, the Blight Review Board met on February the 10th. There are currently seven cases in town that are deemed, you know, official blight cases. There's one case that is in the warning category, and 11 cases that are in the watch category. We have had a history of some properties being on the list for very long periods of time with very little to no remediation. So the Board has become more active this year. I think I've mentioned this. But there were five additional properties that have been officially served with their determination of blight and notification that fines would commence 30 days post-notification. We're still waiting for some of the responses, like the return receipts from some of those properties, but that has been officially commenced. There's one property that's technically in that list of seven properties that continues to show some significant improvement, and we are optimistic that this property will be moving back to a watch category. It's been, you know, delayed with the snow and everything. It's a little hard for them to finish the remediation. And the one property that's in the warning status currently, they have contacted Bob Salito. They thought they were done because they had actually done a significant amount of remediation, but there were some other items that needed to be resolved. So Bob was working with that property owner to clear up what the other things were that we would like to see happen on that property. And last but not least, we have one chronic property in town, and the question had been posed before the Board, you know, what's the next step beyond levying fines? And so before simply contacting the town attorney, I thought I would do some legwork. I talked to Kathy Larkin, our tax collector, to find out how their process works. And then I also spoke with Joseph Strickland from the Westport Board, and I gathered that information. I shared it with the Board. I'll simply say that the Board has some options, but they are more limited than some of the other mechanisms that might be available.
Thanks for that legwork. Okay, Sarah? Nothing this time? Okay. Then Kip?
No, we're having a camera installed so that we can start watching the construction build-out as it occurs, and hopefully we'll soon know how to assess that. Other than that, we're trying to dig foundations and pour cement, which is tough at this time of year.
Okay, thank you. All of us will look forward to checking out your project site. Okay, if there's nothing further, then we will move on to our new business, which is to discuss and take action to adopt the policy regarding the means by which public comment will be received in virtual meetings. And I'd like to just recommend a proposal. In an endeavor to, in our virtual world, receive public comment in a way that is most similar to if we were in person. What I recommend is that we allow people to join our meeting. We ask that, you know, as our guests are this evening, we ask that they mute their camera and their microphone. If they want to give public comment, they put their name and their address in the chat. And then when it's time for public comment, Kate or whoever's administering will invite them to open up their camera and their microphone and provide us their public comment. I think it's simple, and that way we have, as we would if they were in person, we have their name and their address on the record, and hopefully it's user-friendly. So Krista, I know that you wanted this item on the agenda, so I'd love to hear your thoughts and then the rest of the Board.
No, I think that sounds great. I looked a little bit into our other fellow boards and how we all do it. I think what you suggested is perfect. Is there, not that we've had the scenario, but is there a capacity issue with go-to meeting? Kate?
It's over 200.
I think we're safe, and hopefully we would know in advance. For those individuals who choose to submit comment, I noticed P&amp;Z accepts comments up until 3 o'clock the same day. Board of Finance is 4:30 the day before. I think our meeting was 7 o'clock the day before. Do we want to stay with 7 o'clock the day before for written comments? That was another. I think more importantly, it would, I think it would be helpful for the community if we could all be on the same page. I don't want to tell other boards how to do their jobs, but just as perhaps a thought, maybe it's an OPC conversation, Jamie, but I like what you've recommended. But some use Zoom, some use go-to meeting, some use YouTube, some don't.
So let's talk about that a little bit. If we eliminate the restriction on participating in the meeting, then we really could eliminate the deadline when somebody submits public comments for a meeting. They can write to us anytime, right? But we can let them know that if they want to join our meeting and give public comment, they should do so, just as if we were in person. They would come to our meeting, or they would send us an email to the Board about some item that we might be discussing, so.
As Kate is filing the minutes, or whomever is filing the minutes, whatever time it takes them to gather the minutes before this is presented, but you're right, I would think they should submit up until the time of the meeting. But if there's a concern there that I'm not aware of.
My concern with that would be that that could get difficult to manage. You know, write up until 6:59, submit an email, because I believe the expectation is that people, that you will at least know that they sent, you know, sent comments in via email at the meeting. And if I've got to gather those all right before the meeting, that would be difficult. Moving it closer to the start time is absolutely fine. And I see Jeremy's on camera. He might be able to, you know, tell us how difficult it's been for them, if it, you know, if it has been or not.
Yeah, one of the issues, ours is a little different in terms of public comment on an application. The reason we put a 3 o'clock deadline is what we would do in that case is email whatever the comment is out to the commission members. We'd also email it out to the applicant as a courtesy, so they could be prepared to address the comment, whatever the situation might be. And we also like to post it to the website prior to the meeting. We have had problems in the past with people emailing us as the meeting's going on, and at that point, nobody can really respond to it. It's just an email that I pretty much sometimes get after the fact. So the 3 o'clock deadline does give us a little time between 3:00 and 5:15 to disseminate the information to the commission, to the applicant, gives the applicant a little time to figure out whether it's necessary to respond, gives the commission members a little time, maybe while they're at work or right before the meeting, to take in extra comments, be prepared to ask questions about it. So that's why we have that little bit of time. Certainly, you can see from our recent meetings, it does not really dissuade too many people from speaking. Oftentimes, people still want to either elaborate on their email, read the email, but that two-hour window is really beneficial to us. But again, it's a little different than your meetings or the Board of Finance meetings.
Yes, yours, the comments that come to you for applications as being a regulatory body become part of the, you know, the public record for that application. So, you know, we, right now, we have our public comment at the end of our agenda. So there won't be anything in the public comment that would influence a vote that we've taken earlier in the agenda. So I do appreciate your comment, though, Krista, about trying to standardize across the town how written comments are, by what time they're received and disseminated to the various boards.
Yeah, I just think it would be helpful for an individual just to know with whom they're interacting. We could move public comment to the beginning of our meetings after your reports, or have it at both times. Again, I don't want to try to solve a problem we don't have, but we could add it both before and after.
Yeah, I, you know, public comment is very, very important. It's not mandatory, so I'm not sure. You know, I'm open to discussion on where on the agenda it falls. I don't know that I feel compelled to have it twice in one meeting. But I would love to hear from my other board members as well. Sarah?
I understand why Krista's asking, and I do know that typically with some of those Board of Ed meetings, there are so many people that are listening and feel invested in the conversation, and I don't know that we just typically have the volume of participants. I don't think we should have it twice. I think it should be on there once. It's just a matter of where's the right time. It's possible to have it in the beginning. You know, if you've got somebody that's got something particular to say, let's say we have a longer meeting. Our meetings don't typically last past 9 o'clock, but you could have it in the beginning. I don't know how everyone else feels about it.
I would advocate for the beginning as a service to our residents, as opposed to not quite knowing when we'll talk about it. And they could always appear at the next meeting if they want to address something that occurred in our deliberations after they spoke at the prior. So I would advocate to put it before, have comments by 3 o'clock, or Kate, you know, whatever time seems reasonable, and then have them included in our go-to meeting to participate, put their name, address, and be recognized by Kate and Jamie.
So I need to clarify what you're saying. So you can, we give people options right now. They can either participate in person in a virtual format, which I like that. It's like being in a real meeting. Or we give them the option of sending in comment to us. I don't think we need to do both. Right?
You mean not to offer both?
No, no, no. We should certainly offer both, but it's an either/or. It doesn't, you don't have to submit written comment and then join the meeting to present it. But then that brings up, you know, we just have to have a timeframe by which all those comments have to be received so that they can be sent out to the Board of Selectmen to read before that meeting.
Just based upon Jeremy's comments, it seems like 3 o'clock was sufficient, and we meet even, you know, if we're meeting at 7:00. I would stay with 3 o'clock, but I'm completely open to that timeframe. So comments received by 3 o'clock, public hearing at the beginning of our meetings, three minutes, no dialogue as they are comments. And then they don't need to, of course, read their email. We'll have it already before us to be put into the minutes. So you're right, it wouldn't be both.
I have no problem moving public comment to the beginning of our agenda. David and Kip, do you have a comment on that?
I'm confused. Frankly, I'm very confused. What's going on here? Maybe someone would like to, Krista, why don't you explain it clearly one more time?
Sure. So public comment, the ability for the public to share their thoughts for three minutes on an item under which the Board of Selectmen has jurisdiction. Currently, our agendas state that they may submit comments by 7:00 PM the day before, and we have public comment on the agenda. But I think we could be clearer that we would invite the public to participate also on our Zoom call. I've noticed amongst the other boards, everyone does it a little bit differently. So I was also thinking perhaps we could try to uniform, make it a more uniform process, Zoom versus go-to meeting versus 3 o'clock versus 7 o'clock, et cetera. So that is the reason. Sorry, does that make it up a little bit?
I'm still confused. If you want people to participate, when do you want them to participate? Start of the meeting, end of the meeting?
Two separate things, Kip. You know, right now, we allow public comment in writing to be submitted by 7:00 PM the day before. So we want to open up the opportunity for people to join us in person. So that's the first change that we would like to make. And we outlined a process to do that.
Understood.
So as, you know, why don't we dispense with everybody's, you know, general thumbs up on allowing people to participate in the context of a virtual Zoom meeting? They can log in, and we'll recognize them. Is that good for everybody? I'm good with that.
With the chat, right?
Yeah, they'll put their name in the chat, and then when it comes to public comment, they'll be recognized.
Fine.
Okay, perfect. And then that necessitated the conversation about whether we keep that public comment at the end of the agenda or move it to the beginning of the agenda. I'm happy to move it to the beginning of the agenda. So if anybody who's in the meeting wants to speak to an item that we're going to be discussing, we'll hear them first. So I'll make a recommendation that we move public comment to after the town administrator's report for each meeting. Is everyone agreeable to that?
Yes, thank you.
Jamie, in case that there is a report from one of the other committees, like, you know, either the Building Committee or Blight or whatever, do you want to have it be after those?
No, I'd like the public comment, I don't want to embed public comment in the middle of the agenda. It either needs to be at the top or at the bottom. Yeah. So presentations and reports would come after public comment.
Got it.
Okay. All right, so I think there's a general agreement on moving it to after the town administrator's report. Fine with me. Great. And then this issue of by when, to anybody that wants to submit their public comment in writing, by what time do we have to ask for that? Right now, it's 7:00 PM the day before. Kate, what makes sense for you, since, you know, part of the administration of that falls to you, to send them back out to all of us?
Oh, I think community park is fine.
Okay. Okay, so everybody then has to make sure they check their emails between 3:00 and the time our meeting begins. Is that cool? Okay, all right. So I'm going to recap what we just decided, and we'll take a vote on that. How's that? We are going to allow in-person virtual public comment. People will join our meeting. They'll put their name and address in the chat, and they'll be recognized at the appropriate time on the agenda, which will now be after the town administrator's report. And folks can, if they so wish, they can send in their public comment. They don't need to participate in person. They can send in their public comment to be received by 3:00 PM the day of our meeting, and that public comment will get distributed by Kate to all of us so that we can read it before we convene. Sound good? If everyone's in agreement, I'll entertain a motion to approve that. Sarah moves. May I have a second? David seconds? Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Okay, thank you. Old Business, discuss and take action to approve a mission statement for the IT Steering Committee. And David, thank you. You sent in some good comments today. Maybe you'd like to verbalize those.
It's mostly a stylistic thing, but my preference would be to have the first paragraph read, "The committee exists to vet, approve, prioritize, and monitor technology..." Sorry, I can't, I have to put my glasses on for this one.
You had it right.
Yeah, "The committee exists to vet, approve, prioritize, and monitor technology investments, programs, and policies throughout their respective lifestyle." So basically, it makes the emphasis on the vetting, approving, and prioritizing anything having to do with money spent in technology in the town, rather than the idea of creating a mechanism. Just goes straight to the doing verb, if you will, in that sentence. And my only other comment that I sent in was as much a question as anything. In the third to the bottom paragraph, we reference, "The committee will review department requests for technology and hardware purchases and investments, including upgrades." I wondered if we're going to mention specifically hardware purchases if we want to mention software there, because, you know, the ongoing and current consistent evolution of software, I personally am guessing we're going to be seeing more consistent requests for updating software than we are for replacing equipment.
And that's where the big money really will be.
Kate, does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. So I would just say to amend that language to say, "Request for technology, hardware, and software purchases."
Perfect.
I know that Krista may have some comments.
Yeah, a couple of items. First of all, back into the first paragraph, "The information technology steering and government's committee shall develop a five-year strategic plan." I would pull that out of the mission statement because that, to me, is one of their action items or their charges. As we've discussed, this committee is going to be in existence forever. So to me, that's a charge as opposed to their mission. That's more of a, the sentence is fine. As far as the charges of this committee, I was in looking at some other municipalities and their IT or advisory committees. They focus also on enhancing residential services. This would be an additional charge of this committee, but as we're hearing a little bit, what we heard earlier with Pete, and we know this has been a phenomenal focus of Town Hall, especially with COVID, that this continues to be an area in which this advisory committee could focus the interface between the residents of Darien and the technology.
So I would like to support the addition of that, and it really will, you know, we have a lot of people who are embedded in here to serve on the committee that are staff. Some will likely interact in more community-facing technology initiatives, but two come to mind for me, the deployment of 5G and the expansion of fiber-to-the-home broadband service. A lot of talk about that, and some communities have dedicated volunteers or economic development people that focus specifically on that. So we don't have someone who does that, and wondered if maybe we could take the committee or a subcommittee thereof to focus on technology in or a subcommittee thereof to focus on technology in the community opportunities. So would love to get some feedback on that. Kate, you look perplexed.
I am. When you say enhancing residential services, do you mean the services that we, the town, are providing to the residents? Or do you mean services that outside providers, such as FiOS or Horizon, Optimum?
Yes, services provided by other providers, but in some cases, communities have a municipal broadband initiative.
Right, so I think that's a different committee. I don't think that should be the focus of this committee. This committee should be dealing with the town functions. I think you'd be putting too much on this committee if you asked them to also be dealing with how residents get their Wi-Fi and their internet connections.
Jamie?
Sarah.
Sarah, I agree wholeheartedly with Kate. Unfortunately, I feel it is an enormous subject. Not only are there so many different providers, but there's a huge amount of work that would need to be done to provide that to our town. And I think that involves work on a, you know, a state level and working with these providers, and I think that's an enormous charge to task this committee with. And I think it's something that we should be involved with. We should have those conversations. We should be involved with those conversations, but I think I would agree that it would be a separate committee.
Okay. Just by way of information, I am involved in those conversations. West Cog is deeply involved in those conversations, but it really deserves the focused attention of a couple of volunteers that have background in that kind of technology. So I'm happy to keep it out of this, but I think it's necessary, and we should find a way to engage a couple of smart tech people to help us with that.
Makes sense.
Now, the other meaning for that, I do think it wouldn't be bad to include something in here that says that, you know, our IT functions need to be geared towards improving the services that we give to the residents.
Well, that's where, kind of where I was going also, is that I was thinking in particular Parks and Rec and the youth department, so that, well, really any department that interfaces with the public, that we should be keeping that as a charge for this committee. How can we do more online? How can we enhance the residential experience with Town Hall? Could be a separate charge. It could be just a bullet on the list, but I think we need to keep that focus as we bring in software that relates to the interfaces with the public.
I'm going to agree with Krista on that. I think, Kate, you and I have had this conversation before about making the town software so that it's effectively one place to go for the town resident to effectively check into the centralized cashier online and decide which of the town services they wish to engage and be able to do them all in one place, as opposed to having to go to each department separately to make that happen. And that would fall, in my mind, that falls directly under the concept of enhancing town services, services provided by the town to the residents by facilitating it, making it as easy as possible to do it online, which ultimately, you know, down the road, hopefully would lower the cost of the town providing the service.
So I'm also very in favor of that. And I will recommend some language to add as a bullet point, something to this effect. The committee will prioritize enhancing town services through online service provision.
No, I think that sounds, that sounds great. Going back to Jamie's point, though, I mean, if we found volunteers for this committee who could also address the issues, Jamie, that you're currently dealing with with West Cog?
We can sign them up for some separate-
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, that's another. Another item in looking at a couple other communities, I didn't see it embedded, but if someone else feels it is, they had a charge of dealing with, creating standards for dealing with technology-related suppliers, specifically for protecting resident privacy and security, and for developing quality accountability guidelines and metrics in service contracts. I don't know if that's, is that something the IT director is already doing? But that was a specific charge of a similar municipal advisory committee.
Can you repeat that?
Sure. Standards for dealing with technology-related suppliers, specifically for protecting resident privacy and security, and for developing quality accountability guidelines and metrics in service contracts.
Would part of that be addressed in an RFP, Kate? If you were going out for vendor service?
Well, I think anytime you went out for new software, you would want to include that in the RFP.
And then part of it would be in the contract.
Right, and, you know, we do, so there's a couple of things there. One of the bullet points we have is that the committee will ensure the IT department uses IT best practices such as security and disaster recovery plans. So, you know, I think the dealing with protecting residential privacy and security is part of that.
Okay.
But, you know, there are also limits to what we can guarantee in terms of privacy when you, you know, when you provide us information to go in one of our databases. It has come up where we've gotten FOI requests for all, you know, certain data, like, you know, everybody who's in this, on this waiting list, or who has registered for these programs. So it's a little unclear whether or not, you know, if that's where you're going, whether or not we could actually legally protect the privacy in that regard. You know, obviously, we have the obligation to protect privacy for, you know, credit card information, any other, you know, personal data, but if it comes to your name and address, which is public, we may not have, you know, the ability.
Fiable, exactly. No, I understand that. I guess what really struck me in this charge for this particular municipality was more the developing quality accountability guidelines and metrics in service contracts. What jumped out at me was the service contract we have with the Board of Ed, and how we could, we acknowledge that could be massaged and enhanced. Does this committee want to create language that would be embedded into all our service contracts? Back to the RFP.
Yeah, that, you know, and it would be a good function for them. Does it need to be in the mission statement? I'm not sure, but it would definitely be something that would be a good thing to ask them to do.
Yeah, it was one, I look at the mission statement, and then below that are sort of their charges. That's how I see this document. There's a mission statement, and then there are charges to create the five-year strategic plan. This could be-
I agree, Krista. I think that this document could be organized in a little bit of a different way. Yep.
Then I had also seen another municipality who made a very formal document as to how members are asked in or asked to leave, and I can share that. But if you wanted to approve this this evening, I mean, I would be okay also. It depends on how we want to move forward with this document right now.
I'm going to recommend that we take one more meeting to put this in a different format, to make all these edits. I'd like to suggest an edit to the sentence that you just were referencing, Krista, and say, "The committee will ensure the IT department uses IT best practices for system and software security and disaster recovery plans." And then we can format it, mission statement, you know, goals and objectives.
Right.
And then make up of the committee. And I think the way, you know, our charter dictates how we go about procuring volunteers. So I don't think we need to get into anything more formal than what our own town process is already.
Okay.
Everybody good on that? Yes, Sarah?
Quick question. One of the things that we will be relying heavily on is our IT director. Has our IT director been able to give feedback on this statement and the charges within? Is this, does this fit? Does this write? Does this work? This mission statement?
You know, I don't recall if I sent it to him, but I can certainly send it to him with the updates that you've made or recommended tonight and see what his thoughts are.
I was just curious if he had any feedback.
I honestly don't. I don't think I sent it to him.
Okay.
Because I thought it was your decision, not his. But it would be good to hear what he has, what his thoughts are.
Yeah, I would agree. I think that's a good point before we vote on this.
Anything else? Any other edits for this evening on this from any board members? Okay. Then we'll hold, and we will hopefully be prepared to approve a final draft at our next meeting. We're going to move on to transfers because I see it's 7:42, and we have an RTM meeting coming up. Discuss and take action on a request to transfer $64,320, to be exact, from the Board of Finance Reserve to the Nuroton West Intersection Design. Jeremy's here to talk a little bit about this.
This is one of the final remaining steps before getting this project started. As you know, we came to you last February, talked a little bit about the project. You approved the easements at the time. Since then, West Cog has reviewed the application. The next step is for DOT to review it, and as part of that final review, they've asked that we finalize all of the right-of-way information. So that includes filing the maps and the land records, filing the easement documents and land records, and literally writing checks out to the property owners to be reimbursed for the easements. So today, I filed the maps and land records. The next step is to get the transfer from the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, which will allow us to then write checks to the property owners. Of course, as part of the Lotsip grant, they will be releasing funds for the project. That occurs once they give their final review, and we go out to bid, and we get an approved bidder, they will then issue us a check, which would allow equipment to be purchased and allow the selected bidder to start work, and we would reimburse the selected construction bidder for their work. We hopefully, if DOT gets their review done promptly, can go out to bid in April, May, and finish this project by the end of 2021. So we were hoping that we would not need to do this transfer, but DOT was insistent that all the property owners be reimbursed before they give their final approval up in Newington. Ed, did I miss anything, or does that pretty much cover it?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank goodness, it's okay. Oh, now you can, now you can see me. Yeah, I think the important part, Jeremy, is that the funds that we do get, once we get a successful bidder and a contract, will reimburse the money that we're taking right now as part of the transfer. So it was originally supposed to come out of the Lotsip grant. It will come out. It's just, we have to actually front this portion of the money to be reimbursed later. And this is the only part of the grant that they actually require us to front, that we get reimbursed for any part of the acquisition.
So it's a loan, and it will ultimately be reimbursed back into the Board of Finance Reserve, correct?
That's correct. Yes.
A long time coming, this project. So board questions on this transfer? Nope, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the transfer of $64,320 from Board of Finance Reserve to the Nuroton West Intersection Design account, and that money will be ultimately repaid.
So moved.
David moves. May I have a second?
Second.
Sarah seconds. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Did you, Kate, did you have a question, or were you voting?
Voting yes.
Great, okay, thank you. That's unanimous.
Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate that, you being here. Okay, our second transfer of the evening relates to Parks and Recreation, so it's Pam's turn. This is for $11,000 from facility maintenance materials and contingency to tree maintenance. Go ahead, Pam.
Yeah, we've just had some, we've overdraw our account. We've had numerous tree issues from taking down 15 trees we've had removed since July in various parks, and we've had 10 trees, large trees, that had to be heavily pruned. So that took us over budget. And then coming into January, we had two additional jobs, one being at Cherry Lawn Park and another at Baker, that I feel I can cover through our operating budget, but I think because we have five more months left in the fiscal year, I think it would be behue of us to have enough money in there to take care of any issues that may arise in the spring.
So Pam, my question is this. It's, we don't often see budgets that are overdrawn, and I'm wondering if this work was considered emergency work? Or perhaps should have been, okay, all right.
Two, Baker, one was one tree they were concerned about falling into a neighbor's yard, and the other one was a large 46-inch diameter tree next to the playground at Cherry Lawn. That was in question.
Any other board questions about this transfer? Krista?
Pam, could you clarify how much is needed to cover the shortfall? And then you said you're also asking for funds in lieu in case you need more over the next five months?
Right. Over the next five months, I'd leave myself $5,000 to do some additional tree work. We may not need any of it, but I think we should have something in reserve in the case that there's been some storms, that, some odd storms, especially even last August, that caused a lot of tree damage as well.
So $6,000 is covering what you absolutely need to get through what you've done?
Yes.
And then to get through the remainder of the year? Okay.
Yes.
And just one other question. In light of experience this year with tree replacement needs, do you feel as though the budget is accurate for next year?
I think Kate can attest to this as well. It's been balancing around a little bit from year to year. I know at one point, we're at $14,000, then we raised it to $16,000, and we stayed kind of level there, but now this year, just had a lot of different storms to deal with. So it's a hard question to answer. We'll have to just keep looking at the historical part of the account.
Any other board questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve a transfer of $11,000 from facility maintenance materials and contingency to tree maintenance. maintenance materials and contingency to tree maintenance.
So moved.
David moves. Krista seconds. All the, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. Great. Pam, thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good evening.
You too. Okay, meeting minutes. We have meeting minutes from our regular meeting of February 8. Any corrections or additions? Okay.
Nope.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Kip. May I have a second? Sarah seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
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 That's unanimous. Great. Thank you very much. Kate, do we have any public comment for this evening?
No.
Okay. Agenda review. One once. And twice. Okay. Then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn so we can get to the RTM meeting. Sarah moves. May I have a second?
Second.
David seconds. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Great. Okay. Thanks, everybody. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Jamie. Thank you, Kate.